Okay, moving on to our next speaker, I have Ms., uh, oop, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I want to apologize because my mind was saying monthly report Lieutenant Danth tells me I said annual test.
We got monthly. When you did September and October.
I was thinking of that year from September 12th to.
But good backup there. You guys are used to backup, right?
You know, so he, well, he enjoyed it. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Chief. Moving on underneath number 10, Ms. Jan Fisher.
I'm thinking Jay Fisher although I believe Shane Farrell's in the first.
That is a Y.
Take that back. Say, some relation you didn't know about. Jay, thanks for being here tonight and please limit your remarks to five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I don't speak very often. I'm not very good at it. I just came tonight to let you guys know a little bit about me. I, a little history about me. I grew up here in Jeff City. Been here all my life. Graduated from J.C. High School and right out of high school. Or actually during my junior year, all I've ever, I kind of grew up with my grandfather and all I ever wanted to do was farm. And I started farming right out of high school in eighty-seven. We, we've been, and I started farming just east of Jeff City a little ways, on a piece of property owned by a great uncle of mine. And we, I've been farming on the Jeff City, I farmed the Jeff City Airport since nineteen ninety-one. And in nineteen ninety-one, I'll tell you a little bit how that came about. Marty Bros and John Drainer from the, that was a Jeff City Airport manager at the time, was having some issues with odor with the sludge application program that they were doing on the city property. And they both came to me just kind of out of the clear blue and, you know, ask if I had some ground someplace else that we could spread sludge on. And I actually got in agreement with my great uncle to allow them to spread sludge about three miles east of Jeff City on his, on his property. And what they did at the time then is trade some land there at the airport for me to farm that without sludge application that the city owned for this property, for this other farm that I farmed east of town. Over the years, I moved to North Jeff City. We lived in a trailer on the old Hackman Farm, which is on the east end of the airport. The, that farm was owned by Lincoln University at the time and the city needed to buy more property to expand the airport. And I actually helped Marty buy another, or tell him about another farm at the time that was for sale. And we traded in my home and where I live today, and I've built a house there now. And I'm one of the few people that live in North Jeff City. We, we've been there, I think we've lived there since ninety-five. I'm trying to remember the year after the ninety-three flood. I worked, I spent a lot of time with the, with the airport managers over the years, Ron and, and and the previous airport manager and worked with the city a lot. We, we're a family farm. We're not a very big farm. My wife, my wife and I, we both, we both farm. And what we, we have the corn maze and the pumpkin patch on the north side of the, on the north side of the river. And which is actually partially on the city agricultural property. We raise about thirty-five acres of pumpkins today and about twenty acres of watermelons. And canal, see cantaloupes and tomatoes, which are all marketed locally. We, and what we've, what we've done, working with the city, is we've used, I also own about two hundred acres myself. One up on, one farm up on Highway sixty-three, just outside of town a little ways. And, and another piece of property right across from the wastewater treatment plant, directly across from the Capitol. Our, back in, I guess probably when my daughter was born sixteen years ago, I always raised pumpkins for a local market. It was my wife's idea to just run a little ad in the paper and try to sell pumpkins out of our front yard. And she was staying home with my daughter, so we were looking for something for some extra income. And our wagonload of pumpkins in the front yard kind of turned into a corn maze. It's grown into a corn maze and thirty-five acres of pumpkins. And just this last weekend alone, we had twenty-seven hundred and twenty people on Saturday and seventeen hundred people on Sunday, just over, over the weekend. We had people from Tennessee, Florida, Illinois, Kansas. It's just amazing that our little pumpkin patch turned into what it did. The pumpkins are actually grown on, on city property. I own about sixteen acres. That the corn, the corn maze is on the sixteen acres and our house is there. And the pumpkins are actually on the city property, which we give hayrides and stuff to. But the city agricultural property has become a pretty, pretty vital thing to our, our farming operation. And, you know, we've had a good working relationship and I just and am happy for the opportunity to come and tell you what we've, what we've kind of got going on. And we'd like to do more in the future. I'd like to see a fall festival here in Jeff City. Or maybe in North Jeff City, something similar to Hartsburg. That little town of Hartsburg draws about thirty, twenty-five to thirty thousand people on a weekend. And they draw people from St. Louis, Kansas City, Springfield, out of state. And I'd like to see us do the same thing here. You know, we have a, there's a lot of property that the Parks and Rec has in North Jeff City that I think could be utilized and I think we could really, really do something like that. I would invite any of you to come out to our farm and see what we got, got going. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any other questions of our guests tonight? Carrie.
Thank you. It's more of a comment, but it might be nice if our Convention of Visitors Bureau could put that on their agenda or calendar of events. And I don't know, maybe they already do, so I don't know.
We, we actually, my wife's sitting here, she knows. She probably knows more about it than I do. She kind of handles that. I'm more of the field hand. She's actually the head person. You want to tell them what we?
While you're coming up, Jay, they are working with, with Mr. Fisher on a couple of events, that being one. And it was working with him on the Tough Mudder too, so Diane Gillespie's working with him.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Fisher.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. They just came out, I think it was on the tenth of October. And they brought a lot of people out there and we took them on a hayride and showed them everything and kind of how the farm worked. And Chris Wilson contacted me today about some other things. So I appreciate you bringing that up to us.
Any other questions of our guests tonight? Thank you once again for being here. Appreciate it. Next I have underneath number ten, Mr. Shane Farrow. Shane, welcome. For the record, please give us your address and please limit your remarks to five minutes, please.
Certainly. My name is Shane Farrow. I'm an attorney here in Jefferson City. My office is located at six oh one Monroe Street. I've been retained by the Hellebush Brothers, Leon and Teddy Hellebush, who are in opposition to Bill number twenty thirteen dash eighty-one, which relates to the leasing of the property near the airport and the wastewater facility plant to the Fishers, in this case. I've given you each a letter that sets forth the details of what our concerns are in relation to the bid process for this property, to lease this property. Let me just hit the highlights. The Hellebush Brothers bid to lease this property for the next five years exceeded the Fisher's bid by sixty-four thousand dollars. There was some discussion in the Fisher's bid about foregoing a potential claim against the city of Jefferson for some acreage that was damaged as a result of a sewer leak. And that potentially that damage had been valued at around sixty thousand dollars. However, in my review of all the documentation that's been submitted to the city council in association with this bill, there's nothing in any of that that releases the city from liability for that damage. There's no release in the proposed lease. There certainly is no release in the proposed bill that the Fishers have either executed or would execute to release the city from that sixty thousand dollar liability. And because of that, it's a little bit unfair to include that in your consideration of the bids, in this case, because it's a promise that's not even officially been made. So, the Hellebush family is obviously a family farm operation as well. They are brothers. They have degrees. The younger brother has a degree in agriculture. Between the four members of that farming operation who would be working on this ground, they have ninety-seven aggregated years of experience in farming. They farm in conjunction with the state of Missouri on leased ground from the state, with municipalities, including Jefferson City. And they have never missed a payment. They have never missed an obligation under a lease agreement. They are fantastic tenants and they believe that they should be awarded the bid for this ground. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Farrow, or Farrow, sorry, my bad. Alright, thank you for being here tonight.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. One final request that I would make is that if the board or the city council would like to review any of the issues that we raised in the letter, we'd ask that this, this particular bill be put on the informal calendar.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, nothing else under number ten this evening. I know that we have one bill here that's twenty thirteen eighty-five under bills pending that has to do with Stone Ridge. And we also have twenty-three eighty and twenty-three eighty-one that has, that has to do with the lease across the road. Would the council be so inclined to amend the agenda so we can take up those items now? Rick?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second. Is that just a voice vote? Okay. Discussion? Seeing none, on favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We'll just take these up in order. First we'll take up third reading of twenty thirteen eighty, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stanley Merhoff for lease of ground at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
I think we meant eighty-one.
Did I say eighty?
Uh-huh.
I think I did mean eighty-one. Sorry, my bad. That's a different, that's a different deal altogether.
Yep.
Alright.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Fisher Grain Farms for an agricultural lease for airport and wastewater lands.
Mr. Smith, Brett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated by the clerk, this is a proposal to award a five-year lease to Fisher Grain Farms for the use of some agricultural land in northern Jefferson City. I would highlight that this was a proposal and not a bid. It's a proposal being an evaluated process. In our evaluation, staff laid out several different criteria to evaluate. Primarily, it was, cost was a large factor. But then there were also numerous other factors such as experience, proximity, and recent, past history. We have had an excellent relationship working with Fisher, Fisher Farms here in Jefferson City. They provided wonderful benefit to us and were highly rated. The Helen Bushes have also been a very good tenant of some other property that we've had. There has been some other issues in relation to our sludge application, which is the primary use of this property. As many of you might know, we have quite a bit of ground over there. And the city is not necessarily in the process, in the business of being landlords. But in this case, sludge application is our primary use of the, of the property we have in North Jefferson City. As it is a major factor in, in running our wastewater treatment plant. We have found the Fishers to handle that application with their equipment, their experience, and their proximity to be what we believe is, we couldn't ask for any, any better partner. With that said, the staff has reviewed the, the proposal. Although the proposed number as submitted, the Fishers were not the highest numeric number. When the overall proposal, we believe that theirs, their proposal was the preferred one. We also factored into the fact that we had had two years of crop damage that we had been talking with the Fishers on. And the Fishers have agreed to sign a, a release, which the estimated damages would be somewhere between sixty and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that release has been prepared and the Fishers are ready to, to sign that release upon the execution of the, the coming lease agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Ralph?
Drew. Should the damage to the crops be a consideration in the bid of this land?
Yeah, I think so. And there's real value to it. As Brett said, the reason it's difference in value is the difference on the way you could look at the damages. One is just the actual cost of the crop itself, the other is the lost profits. Obviously, lost, lost profits are harder to prove, but certainly an articulable standard in a court case. And it is, it is a proposal, not a bid, so we do encourage all those things to be included. So, that's the long answer. The short answer is yes, I believe it's perfectly reasonable for the council to consider that.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Bob, Scrivener.
When was the crop damage incurred?
I believe the years were two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven.
Okay. Has there been conversation about seeking damages prior to this year?
We've had numerous conversations about the issue as we tried to repair the, the pipe. And then we've had a major project over there that has repaired the pipe. Once those repairs were complete, we began talking about the damages. As I said, the Fishers have been a wonderful partner. They, they have not pursued the issue, you know, through any, any means other than just conversations.
So the, so the city is in agreement there has been damage and that some compensation is due?
Most definitely. And, and the scale of that compensation is, is not, you know, really been determined. But as I said, we, the, the cost of the crop, the, the actual physical cost of planting a crop is estimated to be sixty thousand dollars. If you would figure out a potential profit, it could be as much as double that.
Okay.
And that's over a two-year period, so it's not, you know, it's.
Have the damages been, I mean, the, the source of the damage been repaired?
That, that's correct. That, the source has been repaired.
Okay. And I think I heard you say that the Fishers are the ones who apply the sludge?
No, they, they, they've managed, once we've applied the sludge to the ground, the, the Fishers will cultivate the ground as a program. I'm sorry, I'm a, I'm an engineer, not a farmer. But do what is necessary to turn, turn the sludge over. I can tell you, Mr. Fisher would probably be much more adapted explaining exactly what he does.
Okay, alright. I just misunderstood you because you said something about utilizing their equipment. And I thought maybe you were saying that they were actually involved in the application.
Well, what I was trying to allude to is one of the, one of the factors in the, in the proposal was the equipment owned by the Fishers. And I, I believe the Helen Bush's attorney referenced his equipment being better. What I was trying to reference was that we found Mr. Fisher's equipment to be exactly what we need in managing ground that has had sludge applied to it, which is what our primary focus is.
Okay, thank you.
Right, any other questions on twenty thirteen eighty-one? Rick?
Is our council good with the fact that we have a kind of an agreement that they'll sign a release upon this?
Yeah, that would be maybe the one thing I could disagree with Mr. Farrow about is a, just they wouldn't, it would be illogical to sign the release until they get the compensation, which is the lease. So, I have prepared the release and Mr. Fisher has seen it according to Brett and he's ready to sign it, so. Yeah, it would be, you know, he has to sign when we sign.
Any other questions on twenty thirteen eighty-one by council members? Seeing none, debate on twenty thirteen eighty-one. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next we'll go down about three or four here to, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-five, Phyllis.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Stone Ridge Village subdivision, section three, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned previously, Stone Ridge Village, section three, is a one-lot subdivision. The total platted area contains nineteen point two eight acres. The lot contains a little bit over fifteen acres.
Any questions of staff on twenty thirteen eighty-five? And this is just really the, the subdivision plat itself, correct?
Correct. This creates the lot on which the Sam's Club would be constructed.
Okay.
And also the streets.
Any questions of staff on thirteen eighty-five? Alright, seeing none. Any debate on thirteen eighty-five? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, twenty thirteen eighty-five. We'll now go back to our original agenda where we were at. The consent agenda. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. Okay, you Sams guys, we did this a little earlier, so you might be able to get it done by Christmas now. Alright. No bills over fifty thousand tonight. Bills introduced, first reading of twenty thirteen ninety-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with J. and S. Property Managers LLC for the purchase of real estate.
Mr. Jeremy Cover?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually titled a purchase of real estate, but practically speaking, it's more of a property donation. If you'll see, the purchase is for ten dollars. It involves the property, two fifteen Pine Street. It's a point one five acre block near the intersection of Pine and Forkwood.
Okay, any questions of staff on twenty thirteen ninety-four of Mr. Cover? Alright, next we have first reading twenty-three, or excuse me, twenty thirteen ninety-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri establishing primary and general election dates in the city of Jefferson, Missouri for twenty fourteen.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual election calendar. We've set the primary for Tuesday, March fourth, and the general election on Tuesday, April eighth. Just a side note that we again run into the problem, we're going to have to have a primary, potential primary in March, and then turn it around immediately and have election in April. And as you'll recall, the council did set for this April, an ordinance, or an election issue to change the charter and eliminate primaries in exchange for winner-take-all, which avoids this problem.
And Drew, that's what a lot of municipalities our size are going to.
Yep.
I mean, like the larger cities, K.C., St. Louis, are they still doing primaries?
You know, I'm not sure about those, but the ones we're more comparable with do. Like Columbia, Springfield's maybe not comparable, Joplin, and I believe Cape Girardeau all have gone, I might be wrong about one of those, but have all gone to those winner-take-all elections. It just, it saves us money and with, without a February election, it's really problematic.
For the people at home on elections, what, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars?
Phyllis is the one to answer that, but anywhere between twenty-eight and fifty thousand probably is a fair range.
Depending on the deal.
Depends on the turnout.
Okay, any other questions on twenty thirteen ninety-five? Alright, seeing none, we'll move into first reading of twenty thirteen ninety-six, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with ALPLA Incorporated.
Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an agreement with ALPLA that I think is taking, took a difficult situation and maybe saved it. ALPLA came to us some months ago, and probably at least over a year ago, and asserted that they qualified for a tax exemption under seventeen two oh eight, which is essentially then under the GRET tax. They, they didn't need to pay their taxes. It apportioned their taxes for the GRET. It's about twenty-six thousand dollars a year that they would save under that GRET exemption. We've got some, city staff has some disagreement with their, whether the application was properly and timely made, and certainly whether they would get that going forward. But I would, as I told the finance council, the committee many times, they probably morally made that application, even if they didn't technically make it. They were attempting to do that. The council did change the ordinance to terminate it going forward, but that remains an issue out there. Kind of while we've been discussing that, the need for the rail spur and sewer easements came about due to the Morris.
Packaging.
Converting, converting project. We, as partners with the county, had agreed to obtain the rail spur, or the rail spur and the sewer agreement. So we took an opportunity to sit down with ALPLA and what started out with, with quite a bit of disagreement and argument kind of ended up fairly well. What they said is that they could, if we could make an agreement on the rail spur and the sewer, frankly, we might overpay a bit. And then they could use that time value of money to make up for their, what they believe is their loss of tax money under that GRET exemption. The number that we came to is a hundred thousand dollars, which is certainly a lot of money. But in the agreement, I'd ask for CNPS to tell us what the value of that, those rail spurs, that rail spur easement was and the sewer easement. And the rail spur generally would cost, would be about two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet at about two dollars a square foot. And that is a, for forty-five thousand dollars. So if you, if you need a number to value that rail spur, it's about forty-five thousand dollars if all things go well. If you have to condemn the property, then the way the line is set up, you'd lose, ALPLA would lose about maybe a quarter or maybe slightly less than that of their property, be relatively useless because it had been cut off by the sewer easement and the spur easement. So if you were to condemn the property, number one, I'm not entirely sure you'd be able to because it's for a private purpose potentially. But also you'd really lose more value than that. So our proposal, and it's not in this agreement because functionally it was a little bit difficult, but I'll work on an amendment to make this thing right if, if the council still wants to move forward on this. To take fifty thousand dollars out of capital improvement sales tax, and that pays for the rail spur and the sewer line. And the fifty thousand dollars out of the reserve fund, which would pay for the settlement of the claim slash economic incentive. The other thing that ALPLA's told us is that they would treat that money also, our original discussions were about, I guess, originally we discussed some kind of a payment to resolve this issue and it didn't have to do with rail spur. And it would just be an economic incentive. So they were going to provide us with some assurances that they would continue to view Jeff City favorably for future development. It wasn't a concrete promise, but it was, it was something that at least made us feel good. So the fifty thousand dollars could be interpreted both as the settlement of that claim and an economic incentive on it, so. It's a lot of information. I know we went through this for several, several months at the finance committee, but I'm happy to answer any questions in history or how the, it functionally works.
First reading denied. Any, any questions by staff of Nathan, or excuse me, of Drew on ninety-six?
Hey now.
Sorry about that. Ninety-six, any questions? Alright, moving on, we'll have first reading of twenty thirteen ninety-seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Ozark Harley-Davidson Incorporated for lease of Harley-Davidson Model FLHP police motorcycles.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill authorizes a contract between the city and Ozark Harley-Davidson for the annual lease of two police motorcycles. This represents the ninth year that we would engage in this type of contract. The term commences November first of this year and concludes October thirty-first of two thousand and fourteen. The cost per year, per unit is thirty-four hundred and fifty dollars. Total cost is six thousand nine hundred dollars.
Any questions of chief on twenty thirteen ninety-seven? Bob?
Chief, since we're leasing the motorcycles and, maybe this is not entirely appropriate question, but on the motorcycle that we lost in the accident, how, how was that dealt with under the lease terms?
Is that a Jeremy question by chance, or?
Well, it was a new, first of all, it was one of our motorcycles.
Oh, okay.
Not one of the leased ones. We have two that we own and two that we lease.
Okay.
Two and two?
Yes.
Has that always been the case, sir?
For many years.
Okay.
We used to own four, I think it was five, and we gradually in cost-saving efforts reduced that to four and owning two.
And I guess Bob might be asking, or I may ask, was that one replaced then? And I guess Bob might be asking, or I may ask, was that replaced then?
I'll go ahead and ask then, how was, how, what's our situation with our insurance on the motorcycles we own? How much of a, of a hit was that for the city?
That, that might be a Gale question. I believe we did submit that to Mo Perm, who carries our insurance for the vehicles, and we were paid for the cost of the vehicle minus our deductible, which I think is five thousand dollars, I believe, on vehicles. So I can't say what happened to that money after it came in, but yeah, we did get those proceeds, and they were, and they were remitted to us.
Did we repurchase a motorcycle then, or are we down one, or?
Yes, sir, just recently, when everything was aligned properly, we did.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll be back up to four after this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, chief, along those same lines, how's the officer doing that was injured in the accident?
The accident was on July fourth. He has been, he returned home approximately a week later, which was a good sign. However, he's, he remains on light duty with no firm date as to when he would return to uniform duty. He just, it just takes a while. I mean, he's recuperating, you can see him progress, and that's a positive thing, but he's, he's away from, from returning.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for asking.
Yes.
Uh, Bob, did you have a question? Oh, okay. Anything else on ninety, on ninety-seven? Rick?
Um, we gonna be able to vote on this? See, it's effective November one. Help me out with calendar here. We have next, when can we vote on this? Will it be two weeks?
Do we need to adjust the agenda?
I
I know that, I know the agreement just came in today, so it could be part of our issue.
We actually put it out to bid, and so we were put on hold by a Columbia firm or company. They took a real long time to get us their price.
Okay.
And so we recognized that, you know, we're not going to have it November first. It really doesn't affect us. I mean, we're okay with that if we wait till November fourth. It just delays it a few weeks, but we're okay.
You're okay? You don't need us to suspend it either?
No request of suspension.
All right, good catch, Rick. Anything else on ninety-seven? If not, we'll move on to first reading of twenty thirteen ninety-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Harold G. Butzer Incorporated for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services.
Mr. Bats, welcome, sir.
Thank you. As the clerk stated, this is an agreement for Harold, with Harold G. Butzer for heating, air conditioning, and refrigeration maintenance services. We received two bids for this. One came from Syntec, who has been our provider for the last several years, but Harold Butzer did come in at a less-per-hour price. This is our maintenance contract, so it's based on hourly rate. We estimate that we'll spend about sixty-five thousand dollars a year, and that's just based on the amount of hours that we've spent in the past for maintenance on all of the different buildings that we have throughout the city for these types of services. There are two additional renewal years that would come back for the council on the consent agenda if the council were to pass this agreement.
Any questions under ninety-eight for staff? All right, we'll have first reading of twenty thirteen ninety-nine, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to the fee for downtown parking zones.
Mr. Hilper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It hasn't been that long ago that the council created two new downtown parking zones, the Downtown West and Downtown Central Zones, and that came out right about the time that we did the fee adjustments for Appendix Y. At that time, the intent of the city administrator was that the Washington, the existing parking zone, Washington, would go up to twenty-one dollars, and the other two would remain at twenty, and I believe that is what he told the council, so I presume the council believed that as well. And we thought we could, when we realized that we really needed to break those two zones out, we thought we could do it administratively and determined we best, it would be best just to come back to the council and fix it. So that's what this does. It separates twenty-two dash two seventy-three, two sixty-seven, I'm sorry, into three different zones, the Washington West and Central Zones, defines the, the Washington Zone is twenty-one dollars and the other two at twenty dollars, which is the previous cost.
Any questions on twenty thirteen ninety-nine? Seeing none, and we'll move into bills pending. We have third reading of twenty thirteen seventy-nine, please.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by amending the amount of required fluoridation of the water supply to conform to new Department of Health and Human Services standards.
Any questions of staff? Any comments from staff?
Thank you, Mayor. This bill basically will change the outline and the code such that we would simply follow the Health and Human Services guidelines for fluoridation of our water. That way, we don't have to change this ordinance every time they come up with a new study and a new level.
Questions of staff? Debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Stanley Merhoff for lease of ground at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Staff?
Uh, Mr. Merhoff has been leasing a ground lease with us for a number of years. This is a continuation of that lease. It does follow the current guidelines for the amount for that lease. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions by council? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. We've already covered eighty-one. We'll have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-two, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a contract with Midstate Pipeline Maintenance LLC to construct the Algoa Regional Treatment Facility Disinfection System.
Brett?
Uh, yes, this, this contract is with the Midstate to install disinfect, infection system to our Algoa Sewer Treatment Facility to bring it into compliance with the current state guidelines. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? Any debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Next, we'll have, uh, motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-three, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapters one, seventeen, and twenty-five of the city code pertaining to Old Town District Neighborhood Reinvestment, Facade Improvement, and the Community Development Block Grant Programs.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our omnibus reorganization of the Neighborhood Reinvestment ordinances and sections, and also incorporating an update to the Community Development Block Grant Program. Basically moves all of the references to Old Town programs and neighborhood reinvestment that are contained in chapters one and seventeen, and moves those to Article Five of Chapter Twenty-five. It also adopts a new Article Four pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant Policy and Procedure Manual.
Any questions of Ms. McMillan tonight on twenty thirteen eighty-three? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-four.
An ordinance amending the code of the city of Jefferson, Missouri pertaining to demolition permits.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill comes out of a request from the Historic Preservation Commission. The ordinance currently allows the Historic Preservation Commission sixty days to review demolition permits for buildings that are fifty years old and older. They have been reviewing those in a more, in a diligent manner, but they encounter some issues because they're not aware of the condition of the property and whether or not there are salvageable materials or materials that could be reused. And they would like to have the opportunity to have that discussion with the property owners on the, an effective reuse of the building materials, and also on the other side that it helps them also make a quicker decision when they're reviewing those applications to say, okay, that they will approve those demolition permits expeditiously. So this particular bill would allow them to retain and obtain photographs of the interiors of the building, along with the application for the demolition permit.
Janice, I have a question, and I'm assuming that could be sold at like auction, or, I mean, the interior part? I know there's a lot of trim and mantles and all that kind of stuff. Is that what we're looking at here?
Yes, and the, they do work with the owners to suggest opportunities for the reuse of, or salvage of those materials. Sometimes the owners prefer just to let the demolition contractor deal with that, but they do like to have the conversation with the, with the property owner.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. McMillan on twenty thirteen eighty-four? Bob?
Janice, would you anticipate that this process would lengthen the process so that it might take longer for the owner to accomplish their demolition?
I don't believe so, because the, the interior photographs will be submitted along with the application, so I don't think that it affects the timeline at all.
And can they submit those electronically? Everyone's got digital cameras today. Can they do that?
Yes, in fact, yes, in fact, that's what, what we would prefer, and that's what the Historic Preservation Commission would, would prefer.
Thank you. Good question, Bob. Any other questions on eighty-four of staff? Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We already talked about eighty-five, and we took up eighty-six under the public hearing. First, or excuse me, third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-seven, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Aaron's Contracting Incorporated for the demolition at six oh one, six oh five, six oh nine, six fifteen, and seven eleven Mulberry Street Project.
Janice?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If approved, this item would approve a contract for two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand dollars with Aaron's Contracting to demolish these properties. This is a grant-funded project funded by the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay, any questions on eighty-seven for Ms. McMillan or other staff members? Seeing none, any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri relinquishing portions of a certain easement for sanitary sewer purposes in conjunction with the Mount Hope Heights subdivision and located on the property addressed as twenty-six twenty-five East McCarty Street.
Brett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this bill would release a sewer easement. During the redevelopment of this property, it was found that the sewer eas, the sewer line itself was not located where the sewer easement had been platted. In that redevelopment process, the new easement has been granted over the area where the pipe actually exists. This would then release the exist, the previous easement, which we do not need.
Okay, any questions of Brett or other staff members on twenty thirteen eighty-nine? Questions by the council or debate? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen eighty-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a program agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for STP urban funds.
Brett?
Uh, yes, this bill would authorize an STP agreement between the state and the city for a project at the Jefferson Stadium Intersections near Saint, or excuse me, Apple Region Hospital. We had a previous agreement there, but the scope and size of the project has changed, and it was felt best to start anew. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on eighty-nine? Seeing none, debate? Roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of twenty thirteen ninety, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a development agreement with the Jefferson City School District for right-of-way infrastructure and other related considerations in the area of Frog Hollow Road and Mission Drive.
Brett?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this bill would authorize a development agreement with the Jefferson City Public Schools. The, through this agreement, we would agree to, the school would agree to grant right-of-way for the existing Frog Hollow Road project, as well as a future road connecting the area up to Mission Drive. The city would agree to build and construct those roads, and there's also some other various portions of the agreement, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Uh, any questions on twenty thirteen ninety of staff? Seeing none, council debate? Roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a third reading of 2013-92.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2013-2014 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by reclassifying a position within the Public Works Department.
Matt, I'm sorry, Matt, Brett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This bill would reclassify positions within the Parking Division. This was a pink sheet item for, during the budget process. The, the change realigns two positions to more closely represent the work that they've been doing, and also provides for some future professional development within those process, within those positions. And the effect of the budget is minimal to the general, zero to the General Fund and minimal to the Parking Fund. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 92? Ralph.
Brett, could you explain that professional development?
I used the wrong term. I should have said career development, you know, career progression. In various positions within the city, the maintenance positions, we classify them as, for, for instance, the street maintenance workers classified as either a grade eight, nine, or 10, depending on their experience level. The Parking Division did not have that same process. This would institute that in the process for the parking maintenance worker and also for the parking enforcement officer.
Carlos.
Brett, you said minimum cost. What does that cost?
I believe it's estimated to bring the two positions that are being reclassified from their current level, which is a five, to that level of an eight, I believe. They would, it, in aggregate, over a year, it's about $170 if I recall my number correctly. And Gail, is that?
It is. It was less than $200 on an annual basis.
Okay. Any other questions on 92? Debate by council. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have third reading of 2013-93, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending the 2013-2014 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri by reclassifying a position within the Planning and Protective Services Department.
Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item was also a pink sheet in our FY14 budget proposal. This particular bill would amend the personnel schedule by reclassifying an administrative technician who currently has responsibilities for recycling and other neighborhood services to a, from a 10 to a 14. And this is proposed because of its significant increase in the duties and responsibilities of that position.
Before it's asked, what would the economic impact be, Janice?
The, 50% of the salary of this position is grant-funded, so the increase would be about $5,200, with 50% of that coming from the CDBG program. So the impact to the General Fund is about $2,600.
Okay. Any other questions on 2013-93? Carlos.
How often is that grant renewed?
It's an annual grant.
It's an annual grant. What happens if that grant is not renewed for some unfinished due?
This is an entitlement grant. It's one of those grants that the city receives as a result of being an urbanized area. It's the same, basically the same as our MPO grant.
Okay. Any other questions on 2013-93? Bob.
Janice, there were some items on the, in our budget discussions, and you mentioned this was a pink sheet item, that were forwarded to the Administration Committee and was, I guess, through, I guess, at least tacit agreement by the council that it would at least be brought to the committee and discussed. And so is this one of those items?
Yes, it is.
Because it seems a little odd that we would be coming back as recently as we passed the budget to now amend the budget. So, but that's the reason for this process?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on 2013-93? Drew.
I just wanted to further answer Councilman Graham's question. If that, if they did cut off that grant, then we'd have to have a discussion about what to do is the rest of the answer.
Okay. Any other discussion? Debate by council. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Motion passes. That will wrap up our bills to, bills that we're pending this evening. Next, we'll move on to the informal calendar. Bills 2013-75 and 2013-76. Understand the maker has a motion. Rick.
At the request of the, the owner, we'd like to, I'd request the bill be withdrawn.
Okay. Janice, do you know when these might be coming back? Through P and Z, I guess?
Yes, they've, a new plat has actually been filed, and that will go to the November 14th meeting of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay. Any questions or comments there? If not, they'll be withdrawn. Okay, next, moving on to resolutions. We have no resolutions tonight under 17. Presentations from the gallery on other topics. Have Derek Widener?
Widder.
Widder? If you could please limit your remarks to three minutes and tell us your address, please.
Yes, sir. North Lincoln, Jefferson City, Missouri. Thank you, members of council, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to kind of discuss Dula and Hamilton Towers. I work for a local home health agency here in Jefferson City, and I spend quite a bit of time in these two locations. As a matter of fact, earlier this morning, I spent about four hours within these locations. I run into a lot of unfortunate dealings going on within these buildings. A lot of people there are disabled, either mentally or physically, or they're elderly, and they're having to deal with many people, tenants, who are frauding our own government by, by allowing multiple people to live in their units. These multiple people could be family members, friends. I am bound by HIPAA, so I, I can't release the names of the people I have actually seen, but I do know firsthand that this does exist. These family members in turn are moving drugs and narcotics throughout these two towers. There's also a fair amount of fraud, drug dealing, and personal property theft that many of my clients are just truly distraught about. And it's unfortunate, and it really pulls at your heartstrings to see our disabled and elderly being taken advantage of. So basically, I'm here today. I'd like to call upon the council. You know, it might not be done today, and I understand that, but I'd like to see something maybe get done to help these people who can't help themselves. I, as a professional, I, I just, I can't stand seeing what's happening to them. So, thank you.
Hey, Derek, thank you, first of all, for, for taking the time to be here tonight, to have the courage to, to stand up as you did tonight. Let's, let's give Derek a, a hand. That's really kind of what our, what our country is based on. We appreciate you being here. Drew, I don't know what our next step could be, but I would like to see a report from our Housing Authority Director, and possibly a report from the chief as far as some of the things that Derek brought up tonight.
I would like to mention just really quick that I have made several calls and sent letters to the Housing Authority, at least attempting to get some sort of touch on this, which have gone unheeded or unanswered, or just a quick blow-off, which is the main reason I'm here. I try my best to follow chain of command, and I'm getting nowhere, so my last resort is to come here to you.
I'd also like the, the Board of Directors contacted too.
We'll do that.
Anything else we'd normally do in this scenario, either you or Jeremy?
No, I think we'll need to communicate with Housing Authority and then probably PD with them as well. And we'll, the only thing, if you've got a card or some contact information, be in touch with you.
Okay, if you could give that to him after the meeting, Derek, we'd appreciate it. Any other questions for our, for our guest? Ralph?
Derek, could you come back in, you know, a month or two or three, and let us, give us an update on that situation?
Absolutely.
From your perspective?
No, it'd be fantastic.
All right, Derek, thank you very much. Any other questions for Derek? Thanks again for taking the courage to come up here. Next, I have Mr. Leonard Steinman. Leonard, welcome. And thanks for the apples, by the way.
Leonard Steinman, 110 North Lincoln, Jefferson City, Missouri. My son made it a wearing. He got a ticket in Jefferson City. It was dismissed. It was an accident. It was not his fault. Somebody ran into the back of him, and it, and it was justified not being his fault. We found out he had a bench warrant out for, for this arrest, and he's in the state of Nevada trying to get a job as a school bus driver, and it also made his insurance go up $3,800 for the next five years because they, they put out this bench warrant. I got an apology, but how many people out here are, are justified through our, our city system and then get a warrant, and they don't know that they got a warrant, as a CDL driver and, and it's an owner-operator and owning a trucking company? I run into many, many situations like this, and by the time I get my driver satisfied, it's $5,800 to $9,000 for an accident or ticket that has been disclaimed in the, in the court. I think our judicial system and our people, when they go to do their job, they're getting paid to do their job right, instead of just sending out a bench warrant when it's not recalled for or called for. You know, when you, when you get these points against your license, or you get a warrant against you, and you're a professional driver, it holds against you for up to 10 years, and it's not right. And it needs to be investigated because how many people have gotten these bench warrants sent out to them that's not ratified? Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Drew and Jeremy, would you please look into that and get back to us, please? Anything else? Let's see here. Number 18, any council and staff discussion or presentation topics? Any new business under 19? Any unfinished business to bring before the council? Carrie.
Thank you. At the last meeting, I mentioned the question I had about the swimming pool hours, and Bill Lockwood provided us an email today, and I was going to ask if he could just announce the, the information. Thanks.
Sure. For the benefit of those people who are watching last month who didn't get your reply today, just wanted to reiterate that we do have scheduled hours during the swimming pool season after 5:00 PM daily at either Ellisport or Riverside Pool. Many of the evening hours are filled with swim lessons and other organized programs, but we do have a wide variety of times available for people to take advantage of the public sessions, and we welcome them to come out and do that if people like to give us input as we put together the schedule for next year's swim season. We appreciate if they just contact us at, at the office and let us know their thoughts as well.
Okay, any other unfinished business bring for the council this evening? All right, approval of a closed session minutes from the October 14th and 17th minutes or meetings? Is there approval? A motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carroll.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schulte.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Before we adjourn tonight, Drew, the council's next meeting is?
Next, oh, I'm sorry, Thursday. Thursday evening, 5:30. We've got a closed session. It's no surprise. It is another meeting with the Farmer Brothers. They've got some additional follow-up or questions and answers on, on their proposal, contractual needs of their proposal.
Okay. Any questions on that by the council?
Is there another one coming up for the Earhart Group?
I have inquired whether they desire another meeting, and they have not replied yet.
Okay.
Could you give us the date for the, the public hearings again, too?
It is. The 11th, the 12th, and the 14th. The 12th at noon, the 14th at 5:30. We again tried to get a morning and evening to get individuals who could make it.
And that will be after the final presentations are out on the 7th, is that correct?
Maybe I should do it kind of chronologically. It'd make more sense. Final, but we do have a meeting this Thursday with the Farmers again. If the Earharts desire another, they may have enough information to submit their final best, but if they desire another, then we'll try to schedule it next week. Final and best proposals are due November 7th, which is a Thursday. We will post the, the final best proposals online and provide those on Friday, the 8th. The, the following Monday is the 11th, and that is a city holiday. And then the 12th, we'll have both a public hearing and then an evening meeting with Mr. Johnson that will be closed, in which he will give you his recommendation and any information, questions you have for him. Then on the Thursday, which is the 14th, we'll have that, we'll have that public hearing again. It's an open mic on the evening of the 14th. And then the following Monday is the, whatever it is, and that is the day that we will be presumably voting, or that's our target date to vote, to select someone. That is not the end of[1713.12]